All righty. Good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, July 17th, 2024 Oregon City Commission Meeting. We will convene the meeting and we will have the roll call.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
Here.
Commissioner Mike Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Adam Marle?
Here.
And Mayor Denise McGriff.
Present. Would you all join me in the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we have one proclamation this evening and it is dealing with Americans with Disabilities Act. And I will read that. So whereas in July 1990, the Americans with Disability Act was signed into law, and whereas the month of July was chosen to honor the enactment of this groundbaking law, and whereas it's important to take time this month to reflect on the disability rights movement and the progress that has been made, whereas the city of Oregon City recognizes that one of its strengths is in the diversity of its citizens, and whereas the city of Oregon City believes that the dignity of all disabled individuals, including supporting equity and ensuring acts of discrimination will not be tolerated, and whereas disabled individuals contribute to our community's success and strength in a great number of immeasurable ways, and whereas disabled individuals continue to face discrimination for something out of their control and for being who they are, continue to be the target of violence and harassment, and continue to persist through the efforts of disabled community and support community agencies, businesses, and individuals, and individual allies, and whereas discrimination on the basis of disability is often compounded with discrimination based on race, sexual orientation, and gender identity, immigration status, religion, and age, among others. Now therefore, I Denise McGriff, Mayor of the City of Oregon City, do proclaim July 2024 as Disability Pride Month and encourage all people in our city to join in celebrating diversity and promoting inclusion and equity, and call upon the people of Oregon City to join their fellow citizens in recognizing the passage of this important law. And I will sign this today, the 17th of July 2024. Thank you. So we have, next on our agenda, we have public comments, and we have two citizens who would like to, actually three citizens. If you all want to just come on up, we can take you one at a time. We have four chairs and we have three people. I'll call on Raymond Rendelman first.
So much.
Make sure the mic is on and make sure it's over where you're speaking.
Thanks so much for having me. I'm Raymond and...
Is it on? Because we can't hear you. Is the red dot on?
It's green light. Okay. You should be good. Can you hear me?
Nope. It's gotta be the green light.
All right, I'll just...
John, come on up and have a seat.
Speak until, unless you can't hear me.
Can you hear me, guys?
Yeah, we can. If you can speak up.
Okay, I'll just speak as loudly as possible.
Okay.
Anyway, thank you for having me. I am a member of the Transportation Advisory Committee, but I'm just speaking on behalf of myself. And really, we got a simple situation where we have two commissioners who have said that they want to ban fireworks, but until we get a third commissioner who's willing to hold a work session, we can't proceed with a hearing to ban the fireworks. So that's kind of where things stand at the moment. I think it's pretty simple. On one side, we have the safety and well-being of our entire community, and then on the other side, we have a vocal minority that would just like to make trouble for everyone else in the name of freedom to do whatever they want to do and hurt other people. So I would like to hear from our police and our firefighters. I think that they will, that they're not going to advocate one way or the other on this issue. They're going to present the facts and they'll talk about statistics going one way or the other way. There have been slight variances depending on the weather and how people, what the national mood is, that sort of thing. But I've talked with some of them privately. Our police and firefighters are privately supportive of this. But when they come forward with you, they're going to present a bunch of statistics. And Chief Nick Brown, our fire chief, was asked at the Milwaukee meeting when they banned fireworks, "Hey, do you support this?"
Hey, see, I told you it wasn't working.
So Chief Brown was asked, "Do you support this?" at the Milwaukee meeting. And he didn't want to say one way or the other on the record. But he said, "I just really need to keep a focus on life, safety, and protecting property, but I will say I do appreciate the proactive approach that you guys are taking to this and in getting ahead of this and trying to make the best decision that you can. It's a tough decision. We've gone as a fire department to try and tie it to metrics. We've done that because it's scientifically based. It takes emotion out of it. But the points that you've brought up are definitely holes in tying it to metrics and that metrics can shift. Metrics don't necessarily lessen the impact if a fire starts or if someone burns themselves. So I hope that was an answer for you, but that's really just the stance from the fire department, trying to keep it outside of a personal opinion. I just appreciate you talking about that data because weather patterns are definitely shifting in this area and the outlook for wildfires is different than it's been in the past. I'd like to use my last 20 seconds to read a statement from Christina Franklin from Eleeville, who wasn't able to make it tonight. To some, the Fourth of July is a celebration of our freedom, but some of us are imprisoned by the holiday. Those with PTSD from battle and many animals experience terror. We will stay at home every year to tend the fears and ourselves, our family member, or our fur family. In addition, with climate change, our landscape is drier than it used to be in the beginning of July. The fire risk is real and worsens. Insurance companies are starting to drop coverage for people who live in certain areas. A proactive approach is always best in these regards. So not everyone's going to support the banning of fireworks in Oregon City, but that's the job of you all as commissioners, to take that on because the safety and well-being for all is one of the most important roles that government plays in our society. Thank you.
Just for the record, you said your name already, but city of residence?
Oh, yes. Raymond, Oregon City. And I'm not sure if it was caught on tape or not, but I am a member of TAC, just speaking for myself. Thank you.
So I would have suggested that you did your testimony and then read the letter from Christina because that's a separate person there. Okay, John, do you want to go next?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Name and city of residence?
My name and address?
No, just your name and your city of residence.
John Denny. I live in Milwaukee. I've lived there the last 20 years. Before that, I lived in Oregon City for 20 years. I was born in Oregon City. When I lived in Oregon City before, I lived in an apartment up on Division Street. And one Fourth of July, before climate change, when it was wetter on Fourth of July, some kids in our apartment actually caught the tree, a tree outside the apartment on fire. And the apartment manager put it out. But then, this was not on the Fourth of July. It was a day, a couple of days before. On the morning, on the Fourth, they caught another tree on fire. They were playing with sparklers. And the fire department had to come out on that one to put out the tree. And they said, "No fireworks at all at these apartments", and asked the manager to let all the tenants know that. So that was in Oregon City. Milwaukee, recently, they've had a ban on fireworks. And it has made a difference. So, for example, it's been, we've had hot summers here in the past. If it's been a hot summer on the Fourth of July, I've had to, I live in an apartment complex. I've had to keep the windows closed at night even though it's roasting hot because of the noise on the Fourth of July. And I'll tell you, the ban has really made a difference. I went to bed this Fourth of July at 10 o'clock and slept clear through till 7:00 in the morning. So for people like me, I'm 79 years old. I need my beauty sleep. Anyway, it does make a difference. Also, my sister, who has a dog that is definitely afraid of fireworks and hides, used to hide under the bed, still does when it gets later in the day on the Fourth. But since the ban earlier in the day, there is, you don't hear them going off and it doesn't bother the dog. In the evening, yeah, the dog's in trouble. But it used to be all day long. So that's my testimony.
Thank you, John. Triest?
Triest Andrews, resident of Oregon City. Raymond called me about supporting this and I said, "Yes, I'm in full support." If we all remember in September 2020, back the weekend of my birthday, as we were getting ready to go to Leavenworth on vacation, instead, we had to evacuate from our house and try to load up our Subaru with what are the things you're going to take that if you come home again, you might not have anything left. And that was terrifying. Since I moved to Oregon City in 2003, the Fourth of July has historically always been one of the hottest weekends or the weeks of Oregon City. And anything to prevent any kind of fire, which to me, it's like a no-brainer to just ban fireworks in this climate, this changing climate, I think is going to be beneficial to all of our residents. And I think the only thing I'd like to add is that times are changing. We're seeing city after city start to have laser, as Oregon City did, have a laser show for Fourth of July, which is safe and it's quiet and it's still fun for the residents. And maybe it's time that the city, the residents of City of Oregon City will start to be more open and comfortable with that idea that it's time with climate change in Oregon City and Fourth of July and the dry weather that we have in Oregon City, that it's time to ban fireworks and keep us all safe.
If I may?
Absolutely.
For Mr. Rendelman, because the beginning of your presentation was not amplified enough. Is your proposal a two-step proposal where we have experts come in and testify in a work session and then the city commission decide to or to not take action?
That was how they did it in Milwaukee. They had Clackamas Fire and police both give professional opinions. And I read to you Chief Nick Brown's, our fire chief's, professional opinion, just trying to be as neutral as possible while still being asked for his personal opinion at the Milwaukee meeting. But yeah, I think that would be the responsible way to go is hold a hearing where the professionals give their opinion and then it would be a vote of city commission, whether or not to ban the sale and possession of fireworks within Oregon City. They would still be available out in unincorporated areas. You know, if a nonprofit wanted to set up a tent to help raise money for some cause and sell some sparklers out on Beaver Creek Road or some section of McLaughlin Boulevard that's outside of city limits. It's much safer where there aren't the concentration of people within city limits. So that's what I would propose, is that we say no to fireworks within city limits.
Work session, okay.
Sale or possession. And then if you want to do that sort of thing, you can go out unincorporated.
I've seen the same things, the letter references. I've seen pets that had to be sedated. I've seen, known of veterans who with PTSD have stated what they go through. I know what it feels like to be essentially trapped in your house so you're not trying to minimize the noise or sometimes even the fumes. And I see a progression, as we've seen with the laser show and with the show that Tiger had put on. An opportunity to public enjoy this and to criticize fireworks in private hands, especially airborne ones, is not un-American. It's just a safety matter. So I think we can have that discussion and we can move forward and you can see how your commission votes after that. I appreciate you folks coming forward because it does take a certain amount of courage on something that can be somewhat unpopular with certain elements. So thank you.
Yeah, I support the idea of a work session. I think there are multiple negative impacts. We talk a lot about livability and there are multiple negative impacts on a lot of members of our community from particularly the illegal airborne fireworks that go on. And it's not just on the Fourth of July. It started in my neighborhood on July 1st and there was one last night, and it's the 17th. It is something that we need to investigate. I would like to hear from police and fire folks in a work session and, as Commissioner O'Donnell said, see where we end up because the negative impacts on livability in the community are, seem to just be getting worse and worse.
So I agree with some points that have been made. I guess my main concern, I have no concern about having a work session about it. I do have the concern that there's an impression that somehow banning fireworks is going to be easy for our police department, which is absolutely insane. It will be really hard for the police department. And so that work session needs to be, you know, going from, you know, not dealing with fireworks and writing citations to a full-out ban. That's going to take some time to figure out how to do that, how to implement that, enforce it and all that. So that's the, that is the conversation that I'd like to hear from our police department, how we actually tackle something like that. And the, I mean, look at all these components, the sales. Because if we ban fireworks, do we figure out the sales for the groups that are selling fireworks? And, you know, think about all the aspects that this takes on. By the way, our laser light show that was firework-free was not firework-free. There were fireworks going off at the city park right at the front of the stage. So, you know, when we talk about this, we have to be thinking about all things. The, you know, homecoming at the high school, I think has allowed fireworks every homecoming for the last 10, 15 years. So how do we account for all these various things, deal with those, and not just flat-out ban them and we have that conversation? So I'm open to that. I think, I really, the fire department for sure, I'm sure is behind it. The police department is probably partially behind it, but enforcing that is a nightmare. And even on cities that have banned them, you know, to think that the police department is going to go out all the Fourth of July and write citations is not realistic. And I'm kind of thinking about how it's going to go over at the high school next year when we decide to ban cell phones and how somehow the teachers are going to have to enforce that. It's going to be the same situation, going from all to nothing overnight. It takes some time to figure out the logistics of how it works. So I think if we work through those hoops and get that figured out, I think that'll help a lot and ease my concern about enforcing and implementing it.
Apparently, we're not the first ones to ban fireworks and we can gain from their experience.
And yet, all those cities still are lining fireworks up.
Oh, and guess what? And guess what? The first guy that gets a $100 ticket, that word will spread very quickly on social media and other people will make a decision as to how much is it worth to me to have my own private fireworks show when I can go attend one? So I think those are minor things to overcome. Police department is charged with enforcing so many things. This is one more for a finite period of time, a compressed period that unfortunately sometimes extends on either side of the celebratory date. But to say something is, we think it's hard and we're not going to do it. It's not for, that's for us to try to do it. Don't tell us what you cannot do. Try to do something because if this commission is truly committed to livability, that's a key. And as far as people are doing fundraisers, and people have been doing fundraisers since before I was a child, and we didn't have to sell fireworks. You could sell, there's other things you can do.
Well, I'd like to see if the majority of people, or three people that came to a meeting or we have a work session, if we get input from the rest of the public. I would like to hear that, too.
Well, in the end, it'll fall to these five members up here to make a decision.
Absolutely. Commissioner Marle?
Yes. So I'm open to having a work session. I think it would be helpful to hear from the professionals who are directly dealing with this. I had a good phone call about 30 minutes with Mr. Rendelman and then we followed up with coffee for about an hour to discuss this and other things. And I appreciated getting the opportunity to hear his thoughts and concerns, which, as I told him, are thoughts and concerns that I myself share. I think we agree on the problem. I think for me, what I may disagree on is how, and this is kind of what Commissioner Smith was getting to, how do we solve the problem? It's how do we do something that is enforceable? Because if we pass an ordinance that is unenforceable, then it's merely a suggestion. And that's not going to help our residents. I think that, for me, what I would like to see is us to figure out ways that we can better police the fireworks that are already illegal. I know that's very, very difficult to do. For me, I don't think the problem really lies in the three-foot or less fountain ones that are going off in the streets. I don't think those are part of the problem. But as someone who, until recently, had to spend a lot of Independence Days with a pet who was heavily sedated, these are problems that I definitely understand. I just am concerned with how we do something that's effective and enforceable. Something that is in the back of my mind when we have these conversations is a thought from someone who I think we all really respect, former chief band, who cautioned about this and the possibility that if we were to go out and say, "This is the new law of the land," that you'd have people not realizing, one, that there's a non-emergency line and that 911 is not the number that you call for these sorts of complaints, and the possibility that it would overwhelm the system in such a way where actual public safety emergencies could get pushed or be forced to wait. And so those are my main concerns, but like I said, I would like to hear from the people who are on the front lines and about how we can actually do something that's effective because I do agree with the livability aspects. And as Commissioner Smith and the mayor both know, at our recent McLaughlin Neighborhood Association, we had a good conversation about some public nuisances that have been happening on and around the Fourth of July. So I think we have also taken a really good step, as was noted, in incentivizing. I think that's one of the biggest things we can do, is not necessarily saying this is what you can and cannot do, but incentivizing by giving other options for residents to do. I was really proud to help spearhead that alternative option with the laser light show. And I think that's going to continue to be one of the best ways that we can make sure that this cultural issue can be moved in the right direction.
Well, I agree with everything everybody has said. For me, I back Commissioner Mitchell. It is a livability issue. There's also the litter and debris that comes with it and not everybody is conscientious about cleaning up where they've made the mess. I know I saw a couple of places in Oregon City after the Fourth of July and some before the Fourth of July. And as far as people doing fundraisers, I, over the time that I have lived here, I have seen less and less tents in Oregon City. It used to be one about every, you know, every other block on Malala Avenue, everybody was doing it. Well, there's less and less people doing it. I know the one at Grocery Outlet was not a fundraiser. That was a private enterprise. I do know the one at Joanne Fabrics Parking Lot, that was a fundraiser. So I don't think that is the issue. Maybe some information that we could use is over time. We have been receiving decreasing permits for these. So I think we could look at, you know, five years ago versus this year, and I know there's been less. I think for me, we can get into the laser light show. I did not personally appreciate all that smoke and stuff because of my allergies and I was coughing. I wasn't that near to it, but it was not enjoyable. And I hope we don't do that again. But I think that, as Mike said and others, I'm not a dog owner, but I know people who are all around me. I mean, I just heard at Gaffney Lane. We need more dog parks. We need places for our dogs. We have become more of a culture in this town of people having dogs. It isn't just the dogs. It's the cats. It's the whatever animal it is. This is not something that's conducive and we're at the top of the food chain. And I do know, I've spoken with several members of our VFW post, and Fourth of July, even though it is a patriotic holiday, it is not a holiday for those folks. And I think, you know, it's philosophical, you know, what does the Fourth of July really about? It's not about picnics and shooting off fireworks. It's a deeper meaning. That's a whole nother topic. So I support us having a work session. I support us getting some facts so that we can look at what we can do to minimize the impact. And I know I heard on public radio that they were talking about the impact of fireworks on climate change and they were talking about cultures that use a lot of fireworks. They talked about Diwali that recently happened in India and they already have that airplane. they already have that air pollution and they said that two days after that, they still hadn't cleared the smoke and all of that, so I think we have to really, we have to look at this holistically and talk about what we can do to provide alternatives, I agree with that, because, you know, it's it's becoming more and more of a problem and I know that I saw the paper yesterday that talked about, they had fewer fires from fireworks in the Portland metro area, which is nice to hear. So thank you, folks, for coming in and we'll look forward to talking to you again when we get work sessions scheduled in the future.
Okay, so we'll we'll add this to-
Is there a handout?
I thought there was a handout.
Yes, you want to just pass that out?
We'll we'll add this to a work session and try to line up some information from other jurisdictions, I know Milwaukee, Happy Valley, and then just also, just for, it's interesting how the technology has changed from, whether it's drones or light shows, but as part of our show, we're we're conscious of that, they use what are called a cold spark fireworks, it's a pyrotechnic effect, it produces a non flammable spark that's actually cool to the touch, so as that technology changes, I think there are, you know, parts of these shows that are realizing some of these hazards that do exist, especially when you're putting on some of these pyrotechnic shows or, you know, you've seen, I think there was a pretty bad fire on the barge up in Portland after that fireworks show, so, but we'll schedule something, see if we can work with Chief Davis and Clack Fire and some of the other jurisdictions and see what they have on the books to give you some background.
It would be great to look at their ordinances and see, you know, what we can, what we can try to make it workable, so.
I think Commissioner Smith was right, it's not an easy solution.
No, it isn't and there's going to be people are going to tell us that we are pinching upon their whatever rights and so forth and so on, but this is really a community issue, it's not a, it's not an individual type issue. All right, next on our agenda, we have a presentation, Jenna Jones from Metro is here to talk about the Metro Housing Measure Presentation. And do you need the clicker? That would be great.
Thanks Mayor, good afternoon Commissioners, for those who don't know me, I'm Jenna Jones, I am the State and Regional Affairs Advisor for Metro, which is a really fancy name for lobbyists, I have our housing solid waste and parks portfolios and before I start my presentation, I want to bring apologies from Councilor Christine Lewis, I know she wanted to be up here with me giving this presentation about our latest efforts on regional housing funding. Let's see if I know how to click this, there we go. So a little background, I think most of you are familiar with this, in 2018, Metro did an Affordable Housing Bond, that Affordable Housing Bond had different goals about getting three hundred, thirty nine hundred units built and doing most of those at very affordable levels, what that means is primarily sixty percent of the area median income and below, with up to ten percent that could be between sixty and eighty AMI, and then we also really tried to prioritize family sized homes, things that were not just one bedrooms or studios, so things with two plus bedrooms. Here's our kind of latest dashboard, we're on track to pass our goals, a lot of stuff is still under construction or in the pre-construction phase, there's one development here in Oregon City, Las Flores, that received Affordable Housing Bond dollars and we're getting to the like ramp down of the bond, we're pretty much spent out and have money committed and so our development train is kind of on the edge of a cliff. I don't have to say next slide, I just have to push the thing, there we go.
Question about that slide?
Yeah.
Go back to that slide, I need to understand, you got total homes, which is homes of all sizes, all types, I presume, and family sized homes are a category in and of itself, two plus bedroom, but very affordable homes, does that encompass both of those others? So are those total homes built, is the total homes built around seven thousand or is it?
The total is that four thousand six hundred and seventy one.
Okay, so of all those homes, sixteen hundred and seventy four of them were affordable?
Yes.
Gotcha, I wanted to understand the slide, thanks.
And that's very affordable and like I said, that's a deeper subsidy level and so very, very affordable is like zero to thirty percent area median income and then you have the next tranche that is also heavily subsidized that goes up to sixty AMI and then what we're not counting in there is where we do some sixty to eighty percent AMI work.
Can I ask a question on that slide too, so how far along does a a home have to be to be considered pre-construction?
So our pre-construction is like, it's been planned, we have detailed plans, we've got the developers on board and we have a way for all of the gap financing to come together, so a lot of these projects are pulling from multiple sources outside of Metro, so you've got, you know, the Metro Bond dollars, you've got usually OHCS funding to some extent through like Lytech federal credits and so you have to have all of that secured to be like in the pipeline in pre-construction, so making sure that it is going to be built and is on its way to being under construction very, very, very soon.
Okay, thank you. So so half the homes are family sized homes and about one third of all homes are affordable?
All of them are affordable, the deeper subsidies is about a third of it.
Okay.
I can follow up and email after this if you'd like, Commissioner-
Oh no, I think it's important for the public to understand it, I mean, so is affordable a hundred percent of the average income?
Um, whoa, so-
Twenty percent of the AMI.
Uh, what we're talking, so affordable, you could say like a normal market rate house or like workforce housing, your nurses, your firefighters, things like that, is about eighty percent to a hundred and twenty AMI, or area median income and then going down from that, most like federal and state guidelines for what is subsidized affordable has to be under eighty percent and so when we're talking about our bond, we have three different buckets, we have very affordable, which is zero to thirty percent AMI and then we have like still decently affordable, right, more than what the market is going to produce, which is thirty one percent to sixty percent and then we have a very small, only ten percent of our units can be built in any one development from sixty one percent to eighty percent AMI, so that very affordable number is looking at the thirty percent AMI and under.
Good, thank you.
And just for anyone watching or listening to this right now, we do have a website with all of our bond progress and it goes through some of those numbers and stuff better and in more detail, we have a whole dashboard. And then the second housing service program that we have at Metro is the Supportive Housing Services Program that came about in 2020, it is, we have contracted with the counties to carry out that program and it was really brought about because of, we were building affordable housing, but that was the capital part of the housing like crisis and we were still not getting all of the folks housed and so SHS or Supportive Housing Services is pairing the services to keep people more stable in the houses, so in 2020, voters passed that, we had some goals around rapid housing placement, permanent supportive housing placements, eviction preventions and shelter units and so we've already surpassed our goal in eviction preventions and shelter units and are still continuing to work on rapid housing placement and really, really focusing on permanent supportive housing, so blending the capital investments into deeply affordable and subsidized housing with people who are going to need services long term so that they can maintain like their houses. So the Supportive Housing Services Program passed the voters in 2020, it has a sunset of 2030, so we're about midway through and we've seen a lot of ramp up from each county getting ready and standing up programs, I am very aware that Clackamas County works with you all and has done an all call to most cities in the county to use some of their like SHS funding in their communities.
I'm sure this is being done in tandem, so we build affordable housing and we're building the supportive services right along with it rather than them being done separately, because to me, they need to be together, you can't have one without the other.
Yeah, I think that we're trying as best as we can with two very distinct like ballot measures with their own intricacies and time and place that they were adopted to get them to work together, now saying that there's a lot that could be done to better integrate both systems and I think we'll get into that a little bit later in the presentation, but I will say right now, there is quite a bit of disjointedness when it comes to like, how are these actually not, like how are they optimized together and more efficient than doing two separate things at once and, you know, one of those things that we talk about is outside of shelter units, the Supportive Housing Services dollars cannot be used for any sort of capital, so they're fairly inflexible when it comes to things like permanent supportive housing.
Website or elsewhere broken down by county?
Yes, so we also, we have an Affordable Housing Bond website, we have a Supportive Housing Services website and you can kind of go through all the progress, you can see all of the plans that each county like submits to Metro and what they're planning for in the future, so I can follow up with those after this meeting. So, we've been on this journey because, to your point Mayor McGriff, that these programs aren't really working really well together and that there needs to be something done in a big way to kind of still invest in affordable housing and maintain the service, like the SHS program, but maybe build on it from what we knew in 2020, so we've been exploring a potential ballot measure, because the main impetus of this is, we have the funding cliff for the Affordable Housing Bond and we were wondering if we needed to go out for another bond or if there was another way that we could do it, there was, there's still lots of people who are rent burdened across the like Metro region and it continues to be increasing and we know that there is a cost, there is a link between costs of housing and homelessness and there's a lot more in the Venn diagram in the middle than there are in both individual circles. So our, Marissa Madrigal, our COO, has been trying to build a recommendation for a potential ballot measure and we have been doing lots of pathways to a regional housing ballot measure that included a stakeholder advisory table that met from May to, or March to May of this year, we had three city representatives, one from the city of Portland, one from Lake Oswego and one from the city of Beaverton, a mixture of housing developers, of service providers, the trades and the business community. We have been doing some listening sessions that we have contracted with the Coalition of Community Colors to do outreach with specific community groups so we can get public feedback on some of what's happening on the regional housing landscape, we've done some public opinion polling, we've been going to various city councils, to different business forums, things like that, to give presentations along the way, we met with, I know our COO met with the city managers about this, we've met with the Metro Mayor's Consortium, taking in a lot of feedback to come to some sort of recommendation for Metro Council, which happened last two weeks ago, whenever July ninth was, was when the council got the recommendation, I think it was last week, but I was sick for most of the week, so I don't remember it. But I'll take you through kind of some of the major findings that we've heard throughout all of this like information gathering and then I'll wrap up with like what the recommendation was to council. So our major findings were, most stakeholders really want there to be continued investment in both building affordable housing and providing those services, we had some good conversations about expanding the allowable uses of the SHS funding to include things like affordable housing creation and preservation, so adding some of those capital costs into the SHS bucket and then we had a conversation about whether or not to eliminate the 2030 SHS sunset for the tax, I will say, most people were on the side of extending, less so eliminating, but all of those things require voter approval. The other things that we like found was that the voters believe throughout our polling that local government is off track and should do better with its existing resources, that oversight, and that includes us, and I will say, the main polls were each county and Metro, how do voters feel about it, and the city of Portland, no other cities' names got put in that, but when we do it, even like Metro's polls were really down on what they think as a, like the public, we are or not doing right. There's been a lot of folks who believe that oversight and accountability structures for the Supportive Housing Services Program need to be improved and that the focus should remain on the two populations from the original measure, which are those like most chronically homeless and preventing people to getting to a place of homelessness, so focusing on people with the highest need. And then some voters had some thoughts about the Supportive Housing Services is a income tax on both personal and business income taxes and so adjusting the income tax thresholds to inflation, we also heard that some folks would support a modest cut to income tax, the income tax rate. So, with all of that, there was a recommendation and so we weren't in a place because of voter morale to do a second bond, we have a situation where the Supportive Housing Services money or program is bringing in close to a billion dollars more than we expected by 2030, so we originally thought it was just going to be a flat one billion dollars over ten years, so that's two hundred and fifty million dollars each year, it's now bringing in double and so we've got some flexibility to do. If you want to read the full recommendation, the report is out, this is the link, I'll walk through what it actually says now, but the recommendations that Marissa gave to our council were to support efforts to reduce housing production costs, so we know that construction costs are currently escalating, timelines play into that and then that a lot of folks need infrastructure, pipes and ground, transportation, all of those things to build and continue to grow and those things are expensive and then there are, we know that this is a big conversation for the governor and the state legislature and that we need to be advocating both on the local, state and national level for ways to like decrease barriers to housing production. There are a couple of things that we can do administratively without amending the measure and that is renegotiating our IGA with the counties who are kind of the purveyors of the Supportive Housing Services Program and so we're looking to renegotiate some of those IGAs this fall to winter, 2024, so we can strengthen some oversight and improve transparency and accountability to folks who have asked for it. The other thing that is administrative that can be done by Metro Council is they can index the personal income tax and so they will likely start exploring if they can move the income tax thresholds to move with inflation going forward and that would be, like, that would be applicable to this year if they make action by the end of this year, because we would collect it next year or the next tax season. Then there's a lot of other things that would need to be solved by a ballot measure, so the recommendation originally was on a timeline to explore November of this year and doing a ballot measure and now we are looking for May 2025, because all of the polling and things swirling, we need more time, so we're hoping that we can work on a ballot measure for voters that would expand the allowable uses to SHS so that we can fully combine our Affordable Housing Program and our services program, we can establish one single oversight body over the whole program, right now between our bond and SHS, we have three oversight bodies, we have the Affordable Housing Bond Oversight Committee, we have the SHS Oversight Committee and then we have something called the Tri-County Planning Body, which was, I believe, born out of the IGA, so there's lots of things going on and consolidating that will just make us more efficient as a government entity and then we would require our county partners and those receiving funding to- And then we would require our county partners and those receiving funding to update their local implementation plans. This wasn't, this was something we did with both the bond and the, and with SHS. But it would better align for them to add new allowable uses for funding into their plans. And then we would set standards for reporting, monitoring, and other accountability mechanisms. I think some of that will also include things like better data sharing so that we can know who's being served where across the region and have better data to support our, like, any Metro Council future programmatic changes. I think we will try to extend the sunset. It will most likely be a 20-year extension. That is about as much as the developers, both affordable housing developers need and service providers need to get banks to back their projects and make a business case for we do have stable funding coming in. And then we've heard from many of your colleagues about the need to address cities' support and coordination with their county partners. That varies across all three counties and different cities, but we've heard various suggestions from a direct allocation to cities or a pot that cities can competibly compete with, to the county must be required to, you know, overlook or, like, look over the local implementation plans before the county submits them to Metro. There's been a lot that we've heard there, and we definitely need to explore that more. And then we will likely ask the voters if we should reduce the personal income tax rate. And that's all I've got. I'm happy to answer any more questions.
Thank you for the presentation, Jenna. It's always good to see you. And as you know, through many of our conversations together, you know my belief that I don't think Metro should exist. But with that being said...
Second.
Sorry, I disagree.
With that being said, I am pleased to see the, the progress that's being made on both of these bonds. Something that I think, I think a lot of residents are concerned about is we're seeing a lot of development happening right now of multifamily housing. And to some extent, that's, that's great because there is that missing middle housing. But I think something that we may be missing in this whole affordable housing conversation is the affordable ownership opportunities, not just affordable rental opportunities, but opportunities so that families can actually begin to generate wealth. So what's the thinking with Metro Council right now as it relates to not just investing in publicly subsidized housing that is desperately needed, but on the other hand, balancing that with opportunities to actually get people into ownership?
Yeah, so Commissioner Marl, that's something that a lot of our housing folks right now are trying to crack as a nut. We had a little bit of the Affordable Housing Bond set aside, and I mean, very, very small, of the 650 million, like, not that much, more of, like, pilot-level money to look at, like, homeownership options and affordable homeownership. I think that's something that we have an interest in. I know multiple of our counselors have an interest in affordable homeownership opportunities. But how we go about that, we're still learning and trying to find allies at the state to make that happen. And I know that the state government is also trying to figure out a pathway to make their, like, funding pots go towards affordable homeownership. So I don't have a good, like, answer, but we've definitely heard that, and we've, we've been trying to explore it.
Good. And then just a comment. I, I want to re-up what you mentioned earlier about the need for increased communication between jurisdictions, specifically counties as the holder of the funds and cities who are actually impacted by the investments that are made. A while back, we were surprised to hear that there was an SHS fund investment that was going to be made in Oregon City that we did not hear about from the county and instead had to hear through Counselor Lewis, which I greatly appreciate that she did so. But it just, I think, caught us off guard on a very touchy subject that we just wish we could have been a part of earlier on. And so I just want to second what you've already said and what I'm sure you've heard many, many times is that as cities, we recognize that the counties, they're the ones who are getting the money, but in the end, the people who are dealing with it on the ground are the cities, and we ought to be a part of those conversations before they're, just the, the day before they're going to be approved.
I would concur with everything you said. As you know, it's been my bandwagon to talk about affordable ownership. I really believe that we've missed the boat on making everybody in the world be renters. That does not help with wealth creation. It does not help families pass on something that they own to other members of their family. Doesn't mean they have to, but it's, there's, there's definitely a difference between people renting and people being able to have the opportunity to own something. I think I would also agree with you on the fact that, you know, the counties hold on to this money, like, for grim death, and it's, they say it's their money, and it's not really their money. They're supposed to be doing things in the community. And, you know, I, I have to thank our city manager for working with me on telling the county, you are not talking to us. We're in the same fricking town. Pick up the phone. It doesn't take that much to let us know what's going on because we do not like having to sound like that we're supportive of something when we didn't know anything about it. And it's, and again, I've, I've been, I've been politely critical of the county for their lack of communication, and I will continue to do so. I think that in, in my background, I go back to before it became Metro, it was Crag, and their offices were on First Avenue, and we'd go to that block bunker there for our meetings. And I do think that we have a unique opportunity as a region to have a regional government. Now, it's expanded a bit, but beyond what, you know, we originally talked about with Crag, but I think we can work with that. And I've, I've been a, you know, a supporter of Metro. I just think that we need to, you know, take a look at the scope and things that Metro is doing. And I think that the pass-through of the money has been good. So let's just get the cities into the act. I do appreciate the county administrator, excuse me, the Metro Administrator not putting this on the November ballot. That was a big concern to the Metropolitan Mayor's concern, and we said, what the rush? What's the rush? So now we have more time, and I think that's important. Go right ahead.
On that point, though, I am concerned about an election in May of '25. I think that raises concerns for me about the fact that this could look like an attempt to put something on the ballot when very few people are known to vote in elections like that. So that is something that concerns me about a ballot measure that will be of such importance, the possibility of doing it in, in a way that could appear, I'm not saying that's the intention, but that could appear as though we're trying to just slide it in, you know, under the voters. And so I don't know what the timeline looks like, but I think it would, it would obviously be good for Metro to present other options for if they could just push it out until the '26 election, when people are going to be more in that mindset. Yes.
Other questions? Thank you, Jenna. We really appreciate it.
Mayor, I had to say one thing.
Oh, yes, you may say one thing.
So I, I did participate in that call, and I did appreciate it. It was a really good, a lot of great information. So, you know, I...
Do they understand what you participated in?
So it was, it was similar to this. It was working with the city managers to give them an update on the potential for putting this on the ballot and what the Metro Council was discussing in terms of extension tax rate, how those services or how the monies could be utilized now versus what they're proposing to utilize them for. And so I think some of the comments I'm going to make may sound a little harsh, but they are also coming from, I think, we've done a really good job of working with the county and being a leader in this region as a jurisdiction of our size, which has traditionally not been responsible for social services. We now have a homeless liaison officer, behavioral health specialist. We're creating a community court. We're going to have a caseworker, another project manager. These are costs that are coming to the local jurisdictions that we traditionally not have and that are taken away from what we traditionally do. So my point was that the county has not kept up with the social services that are needed right now. So to take capital out of that, we really need to be careful because we are not providing the social services. And they're falling to the local jurisdictions who are having trouble to get the funds to deal with the issues that are being created when these housing is brought to our jurisdictions. We will put together the data on where these have come into our community and the calls, tremendous increases that we've seen. So there really does need to be a legitimate conversation about local jurisdictions getting assistance to deal with these impacts. The other part of that is I was pretty disappointed that throughout this whole process, law enforcement and the court system has not been included on these committees, and they have to be. I know there's a, you know, we're not criminalizing this, but they're, they are part of this solution. And so I do hope that that does resonate or get included because I think it's a gigantic hole in what's coming from on high to those of us who are actually implementing things. So, thanks.
Just to clarify, he's talking about the Oregon City Managers Association meeting that they just had. That's where they were all together, talking about this. Yeah, I agree that that is, that is definitely a missing piece. It's, this commission is not naive about the fact that all of these things that are happening end up in local jurisdictions. It's not a trickle-up, it is a trickle-down, and the impact, the local governments with all of this stuff, I'm talking not just about social service, I'm talking about everything. It always ends up with us. And we do not have money to do this. It's a balancing act between what we need to do for our communities in terms of, you know, we just talked here earlier about livability, and that's a big part of what makes this community special. And so we've got this on one hand, and then some of the unfunded mandates. It's, 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 again, it all ends up, you know, at the bottom. And we definitely need some relief and we need some recognition that we are actually carrying a lot of the water for all of this as opposed to, you know, the county. I applaud you, county, taking, you know, all the credit for all these social service things, but we're the ones that end up with the, the fan and the stuff hitting it. So, thank you, Jenna. We appreciate it.
Very eloquent.
Well, I wanted, you know what I wanted to say, but I really couldn't.
We did, we got it.
The stuff hitting the fan. All right. Okay, we've got the consent agenda, and I guess I would like some, there's just a couple of questions I have about a couple of the items. I don't want to really pull them in terms of, I'm objecting to them, but I have some questions.
It would be, I guess my recommendation would be if we'd like to talk about things, let's just pull them. I mean, the consent agenda is to just consent.
Yeah, I do, I, there's, I have some questions.
We can just pull them. If we have questions, just pull them, and we'll deal with them in general.
Okay, so let's just, let's just talk about them right now. Does anybody else have any questions about any of these items?
Let's pull.
We're pulling them, and we're going to talk about them now.
Great. You're pulling everything?
I have a question about 7A, 7B. The only one I don't have a question about is 7C, and I have a question about 7B.
All righty.
So I'll start with the top one. On the resolution, I don't have any objection to it, but my question is, is, is terms of the multi-jurisdictional natural hazards mitigation plan, I did not see South Fork in there. And since three of us sit on that board and water is an essential service and there's always hazards and everything else going on with all of that, why is, why is there a reason that South Fork is excluded? I don't know what water services the other jurisdictions that are on that list, but I saw, you know, Milwaukee, Happy Valley, maybe they have in-house. I mean, I know we're unique with, with our water district, but that was a concern. Otherwise, I thought the report was, was really informative. And then when I saw the stuff about policies and programs and master plans, I thought, oh, boy, okay. Hi, Vance. Got to get the mic over by you. You're welcome.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Great.
Can you hear him back there, John?
So Mayor, your question was, why is South Fork Water Board not as part of the Oregon City Addendum or doing their own natural hazard mitigation plan?
I know they're not doing that, so why is it, why is it not included as part of this?
I do not have a good answer for that. It was not included in the 2019 version, nor the version before that. And when I updated the versions, I kept pretty close to what had been done in the two previous iterations. And again, South Fork Water was not mentioned in the two previous ones. And I didn't find or see, nor did I necessarily look for a place to include them in this most recent version.
Go right ahead.
Well, we just came from that American Water Works thing, and most of the focus on that was dealing with events such as this plan talks about, talking about vulnerabilities. And I mean, the provision of water would be a key vulnerability. And beans that they're, we have South Fork as providers to multiple communities, you would think that they would be included and engaged in this conversation. That's just an oversight, and I think it could be, should be corrected.
I guess, I guess on page 21, we took, we do talk about critical infrastructure being South Fork Water Filter Plant, South Fork Water Intake, South Fork Water Division Street Pump Station, Clackamas County Water, South Fork Water Intake, South Fork Water Transmission Line. So, you know, they are referenced. I'm not sure what else...
Well, are they participants in the actual discussion? Because nobody knows their vulnerabilities or strengths better than those who manage it. That's my only question.
I'm not sure if they've been a part of the, are they part of the group?
No, Commissioner, they were not part of the discussion in this. And as Tony mentioned, they were listed, just listed before as critical infrastructure, and that maintains in the current version.
Yeah, I, I just think it's, in, in my opinion, I think it's just, it's, it's an omission. I'm not sure to, to what level of involvement they need to be in, but rather than just being a mention, I mean, on the section that talks about the, the plans underwater, South Fork Water Board's plan should have been as outdated as it is. It should have been listed there, not just in an appendix. I, I know that many of you staff people are aware that, you know, I have some major concerns about the vulnerability of our system. And I'm not saying that, you know, it's going to collapse tomorrow, but we've just, we've got to consider everything, and that, to me, is, is fairly critical.
I mean, if South Fork has a mitigation recovery plan, we, we could certainly add it as an appendix.
I don't know, we, I've, I've never seen it.
It seems like that work should be done by South Fork for their facilities.
No, I'm not saying that there's work. I'm just saying, how is, how is that whole process of what they're doing integrated into this thing? Because it seems to me that rather than saying they're separate, it should be a part of this. I don't know. I may, maybe I'm just completely off-base on this, but that was what I saw, just everything else looked pretty good, and I kept going back to what's going on with, you know...
Yeah, I don't...
They can't be separate.
Well, if water is the most essential element to sustain life, and when those things we talked about at the Water Works Convention recently, not only about there's water in the lines, but how do we deliver water? So then you talk about the availability of power and how to get power there in the absence, if there's a power failure. So I think it's an integral part of the thing, and maybe I need to read it in more depth, but I don't see the two as separate. I see it as an essential element of the overall plan. So I guess I would encourage at least participation in the formulation of the plan to include South Fork, even though they're mentioned, and I, I don't disagree with it. But I can tell you that the three of us that sit on that board bring a lot of knowledge to it, and the people that manage it bring a lot of knowledge, and the people who sit in the equivalent of Vance's position certainly bring a lot of knowledge. It could have value in the event that we do face a nat, a natural hazard. So that's all. It's, it's not, it's good, and can we make it better?
I'm looking at the Clackamas County Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan, and then there's an addendum from, it looks like, every city in the county. And there is a separate addendum for Clackamas River Water. So it seems that we certainly should have one.
An addendum.
An addendum, not a mention in our addendum, but a separate addendum for Clackamas, for South Fork Water.
For this report, yeah.
As an addendum to the county's report, since Clackamas River Water hasn't. This seems to be consistent.
It only makes sense.
It would make it consistent. That's what was alarming. I said, well, why are, why are they listed in here? And, yeah.
And I, and I think a lot of our other mitigation plans would fall apart if our water system fell apart first.
They do.
And yes, would that be, could we make that minor recommendation that, that be an addendum to this report, or do we have to go through everybody else to...
Um, I think, through my channels, through the county, I can make that recommendation. Certainly, I would communicate with Wyatt Parno with South Fork Water. The, moving forward, which, which I mean by, in five years, when this is ready to be renewed, that's when South Fork Water would have time to do their addendum. The addendum, our Oregon City addendum to the county's natural hazard mitigation plan, it, it, time-wise, needs to be adopted, and for South Fork Water, who has never done an addendum to the county's plan, it, as, as you've all seen, it's a rather large document, and it would take them quite a while. And the county is eager to have cities and jurisdictions get their addendums passed by resolution, because the next step is for the county to send it, all the municipalities and jurisdictions, they send all the addendums to FEMA, who then looks at them all, incorporates them all, it comes back to the county, and then it goes in front of the county commissioners for their, for their approval. So, unfortunately, there's just not time for South Fork to do an addendum on their own, like Clackamas River Water has, in this cycle. But I do agree with Commissioner Mitchell, and the rest of you, I, I think I see a lot of consensus with the commissioners, that it, it would be a good idea. But again, that's a discussion that myself, the next Public Works Director, and probably Tony, would need to have with, with Wyatt, and make sure that he's on board. I'm sure the county would be interested in that, but again, that's a question for the county, because we're just an addendum to the county's natural hazard mitigation plan.
Well, like I said, we've gotta figure out how to get it in there, because to me, it's an oversight. Five years ago, 10 years ago, it, it should have been, should have been in there, but we need to figure out a way to get it in there, and I, I definitely, gentlemen, we need to bring this up at our next meeting and say this, with everything else on our big list, it's like, why wasn't this on their radar? I'm a little, I'm a little dis, I'm not disappointed in us, I'm disappointed in, in...
Well, and I think it's important for the public to be assured that these same conversations happen within the South Fork Water Board and within the management of South Fork. We constantly look at our vulnerabilities and capabilities, we look about how we're gonna respond, we look about, we look about, at, at those things that are the most critical elements that could fail, and how will we deal with them? We look about continuing the supply of water, which has so, is so many, a critical element of any response plan to a, to a catastrophe. So, be assured that it is not unnoticed, and we are taking, actually comparing many, ourselves to many other water jurisdictions as a result of that national meeting, we do doggone well, but we can do better. And we just need to integrate that which we already have with that, with this plan. If the timing is critical, we, we'll survive the moment, but we, we need to have that conversation, and at some point, add it.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm supportive of what we have so far, I just, I feel we need to, to make sure that, that this is on the radar.
Yeah.
And that this is getting done before the next cycle of this plan being updated, because that needs to be in there.
We'll put it in our next South Fork Water Board meeting.
Yep, that's what I was suggesting. Uh, that was my only question about 7A. 7B, I just wanted to say that, you know, I, I have been very impressed with our contractor, Landis and Landis, and they've been doing a fantastic job, so, that's, I don't want to pull that one. Talk to us about South, about Forsyth Road.
Oh.
Seems to me 23,000, what is it, 950 dollars, that doesn't seem like that's enough money. That road is not in great shape.
It's a real short section.
Yeah, I know, and that, sorry, John, but that is not a great map, that's in the back, it looks like it got stretched out, like silly buddy.
I'm, I'm pulling this item up, because I'm not, my recollection is the, this is a, a small piece, that, yes, the map is stretched for some reason, I'm not quite sure why that happened, but there's just a, a, a small section of roadway there, the rest of that roadway, we already have jurisdiction, so this is what we found to be a missing piece, and so, you know, we looked at the area, we applied a unit rate for a two-inch overlay, I think we're gonna do this in-house, we're gonna overlay this in-house, and really, it's just, it's just an oversight, I think, in terms of when the rest of the roadway was brought in, this piece for some reason wasn't described, so that's, and that was discovered, I want to say that was discovered by our operations folks who were wanting to do something, and then come to find out it was a, it was under county jurisdiction, so, staff are really just working through cleaning that up, and...
Can we pull up a better map?
Well, it doesn't trouble me, I mean, if you look at it, it's right at the very termination of the road.
I know, I was trying, I was looking at that, and I was trying to...
I mean, the rest of the road is troublesome to me, but it's not ours, and having driven it at night in a dark rainstorm...
Yes, it's, it's...
It'd be, so many questions about the element, yeah.
It's a thrill ride, believe me.
I don't know if, Evan, do you have, do you have the ability to pull up Google Maps or OC Map?
Do we, we own the rest of it?
No.
Yes.
Is the rest of it within our, within the city limits?
We've got jurisdiction of the, the piece, well, we, uh...
This is serving, this is serving the industrial area on the north side.
Yeah, this is that dead-end piece on the, on the, the 205 side of the tracks.
Right, the railroad, yeah.
Yeah, most of Forsyth is still on the other side, on the east side, or the county side is still, for the most part, that's county jurisdiction.
Don't cross the railroad tracks, I'm going into where the, their building of the containers and the guy's got, yeah.
Container homes, yep, right, right.
And so we're just gonna do an overlay, that's it?
Well, I didn't look at the details of what they're gonna do.
I know, not that map.
Or a drawbridge.
That's even worse.
It just keeps getting better.
So, Mr. Lewis, Forsyth, where it winds up the hill, makes those really sharp corners, that, that is under our control, that's under our control already?
Oh, good.
That, that's county jurisdictional roadway.
That's county.
Section of Forsyth, yeah. Yeah, all that kind of landslide, that area that feels a little bit like it, like it's got some issues.
Okay, oh, much better.
Yeah, so, um, that, that piece right there, really, from the railroad right away to the corner, right there, that...
Which corner? Oh, that corner, okay.
That section right there.
To Park Place Court, okay.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, that's...
It's a small piece, it's easily kind of done with our internal crew, and I don't know exactly, I suspect that they'll want to patch some and mill some, and it's, it's not, it's, it's more of a, a maintenance road, it's not got a lot of heavy traffic on it, or at least a lot of, by heavy, I mean, it doesn't have a lot of volume.
No.
It does have some truck traffic back in there, but...
So, are you sure that money that we're getting is enough?
I think it is.
Because I'm, you know...
I think it is.
There's always a surprise factor, when we're taking over something that used to be the county's.
Yeah, I mean, I think the county's, you know, county's been compliant with their memorandum of understanding on jurisdictional transfers, they've questioned some of these jurisdictional transfers as well, but, yeah, this piece is, seems pretty simple.
Oh, I thought you'd just round it up to 25,000 and call it good, you know? But what if we encounter something that we don't anticipate, and we don't have enough money, we're, we're gonna have to pick up the slack?
Uh, well, I mean, the county, the, the way the MOU reads right now, the county is, when, under jurisdictional transfers like this, that they are responsible for the cost of a two-inch overlay, and in other, this has got no sidewalks on it, and other sidewalks, we've forced them to do other things, like fix the ADA ramps as well, but this has got none of that...
None of that, yeah.
Associated with it. Um, you know, we're, we're talking about other roadways, and we're looking at signalization, any, you know, even, you know, when we pave a street now, we're required to bring the ADA standards up to speed, which means replacement of most of the intersection ADA ramps, making sure ped buttons on signals are at the right height, you know, so we gotta do all those other things, and that's not really addressed in the MOU, so, but that MOU, I want to say, I don't know, you remember, it was like 1989, it's pretty dated, it needs to be updated. But, I think for this piece of roadway, it's pretty straightforward.
Is there an inflation factor in it?
It's the, it's the real cost of, the cost of doing a two-inch mill and overlay today.
Alright, I'm good.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We'll try to get better maps, I'm not sure, I think we sent that map, I just think when it loads up into the system, it tweaks it a little bit, right? So, we might work on that.
Roll, please.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
I know, that's why I said it was stretched out, I was like, what the heck, I drove over there, just so I could figure it out.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Marle?
Aye.
Mayor McGriff?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Alright, so we don't have any public hearings tonight, but we do, under General Business, we have, we're having it back, so first reading of ordinance 24-1006, this is revising, city code of revising the stuff that we talked about last time. Go right ahead.
Good evening, commissioners, my name's Hannah Schmidt, and I am the Community Engagement Specialist for the City of Oregon City. I'm bringing forward this ordinance that revises the city code for the Youth Advisory Commission. I've edited the revisions from the last special meeting that we had together, where I brought it before you, and it was emphasized that the Youth Advisory Commission should be extended to applicants who not only live within the City of Oregon City, but also attend schools within the City of Oregon City, with the exception, or with the amendment, that no more than two seats should be held by Youth Advisory Commissioners who live outside of the City of Oregon City.
Questions?
No questions from me.
Okay, well, let's have a motion then.
Thank you, uh, thank you for making those revisions. Uh, I will move to approve the first reading of ordinance number 24-1006, revising the city code for the Youth Advisory Commission.
Second. All right, ahead, Carrie.
Ordinance number 24-1006, an ordinance of the City of Oregon City revising the city code for the Youth Advisory Commission.
Go call.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Marle?
Aye.
Mayor McGriff?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Alright, 9B, my second favorite agenda item for the evening. Uh, we are looking at a participation as an amicus, filing an amicus brief in the Department of Land Conservation Development Commission, DLCD, versus Clackamas County. Is that planning? And attorney?
I think it's, I think it's just me tonight.
Oh, it's just you, okay, well, that's perfect.
It's all we need, it's all we need, let's do it.
It's only me. Um, thank you, Mayor McGriff and Commissioner, my name is Carrie Richter, I'm the Deputy City Attorney. I wanted to give you a little background of where we are with the zone changes happening in Clackamas County. I know we've been before you talking about the, there have been a series of zone change applications filed on Beaver Creek and Highway 213 south of the city limits, and the city has had some concerns about how the increased density resulting from the upzoning impacts the city's failing transportation facilities. And, as you know, the city has appealed a Luba decision in one of those applications called Man Construction. Man Construction, and that case is stayed while we await the resolution of another appeal, which is what I want to talk to you about tonight, which is called Saragino. So, Saragino owns 111 acres approximately one mile south of the UGB adjacent to Highway 213 and across from the Stone Creek Golf Course, if you know where that is. Clackamas County approved Saragino's application to rezone this property from a 10-acre minimum lot size to a 2-acre minimum lot size, so the difference is 11 units, 11 lots to 52 lots. The city did not know about that application, so the city did not submit any comments. DLCD did submit comments expressing concern that this rezoning was contrary to an administrative rule that was adopted in 2000 in an attempt to distinguish rural from urban uses. And so DLCD appealed the county's decision in Saragino to Luba. And in May, in May, mid-May, maybe early June, Luba affirmed DLC, or, sorry, remanded the county's decision, agreed, Luba agreed with DLCD that the administrative rule prohibited this kind of zone change without an exception to Goal 14. Clackamas County and Saragino have appealed that decision to the Court of Appeals. And, um, one of the things that, so the reason I'm here presenting tonight is to ask the commis, for the commission's authorization for our office to file an amicus brief at the Court of Appeals, providing the court with some of the practical implications of this decision. Certainly, the legal question that the court will have to decide will have to do with this statutory interpretation of the statutes and the rules that are at issue, and it's very nuanced, and I'm happy to get into it, but that will be covered by DLCD. The point for us would be to provide the court with some explanation that this is not just an academic exercise, this is, has practical implications. And when you look at the Luba decision, Luba did a lot of the legislative history associated with adopting these rules, the, called rural residential rules, and there's a discussion from then DLCD Chair Benner, saying that the, the effect of allowing these upzonings from R5 or R10 to R2 will be to implicate, have, will have real-life impacts, it will impact taxpayers, it will affect natural resources, it will affect, and so, my idea is that I would use that as a starting point and explain that there are practical implications, and those implications fall in cities, because cities provide the services that these zone changes demand. So, I wanted to brief you on that and get your thoughts on me proceeding with an amicus brief. The deadline for filing is the 1st of August, and I don't expect it will be very long, it would just be a few pages explaining how, the, what the effect is from a practical standpoint. Thank you. Are you happy to answer any questions, or...
Absolutely no question that we should file this brief, in my mind. I mean, to make the distinction that something is either on one side or the other of a, a line that distinguishes city from county is absurd, I mean, it's almost as absurd as the old days of smoking and non-smoking, the only divider was a glass partition.
It's that.
So, I mean, if it impacts us, I don't care if it's one mile out or whatever, if, if we're providing a critical service or critical route, we need to file this brief. Your statement about the impacts of it is very good, and we should proceed, in my mind.
And I agree with everything Commissioner O'Donnell said, I mean, we, we do, any, anytime something happens in the city, we do a, a traffic survey, and a traffic analysis, and we can percentage out how much of the traffic is gonna go this way or that way, and, and this traffic is not gonna stop a mile down Beaver Creek Road and not, or 213, and, and not come into Oregon City. You know, 80% of it maybe is, is gonna be headed right onto our streets, and, and we get nothing for it, so I, I agree 100%, we need to point out the implications of this in the brief, thank you.
Uh, thank you. So, just a quick question first, is it, was it 1990 when we signed our Urban Growth Management Agreement with the county?
Ooh.
Around the 90s.
When I was working for the city.
Are those ever revised?
We talked about it many times, we talked about updating it many times.
Because that ought to be something that we should be looking into, to have a, a document that's... Um, to have a a document that's super important for the future growth of our, uh, city or what that looks like, um, to be as old as it is, uh, I think is very concerning to me. Um, and and I think for, so that was my question. Thank you. Um, just wanted to confirm that. But I think for people watching, um, what the message to take away from this is that we as your city commissioners hear and also live out the concerns that we're constantly hearing from folks about the rapid growth that's occurring right now, especially in that part of town on, along Beaver Creek. Um, and that with the limited tools that we have in our tool belt, uh, we're trying to do what we can to make sure that the adverse traffic impacts and the impacts to our critical infrastructure, uh, are taken care of. The reason why this matters is because even though it's outside of the city limits, um, that everything, having more residential yeah, uh, units there is going to mean more people on our streets. And that's something that we need to take really seriously and, um, I I'm glad that our commission has taken a a strong stance on this.
Yes, I would also point out, uh, one of the difficult, frustrating parts of this is that, for example, on two thirteen and Beaver Creek Road, a county facility and a state facility of which we don't own either.
Right.
Of which we've increased in our, have an additional fee for a right turn lane that we apply to our developers and our folks building. And they won't even do a traffic study on their own facility that's impacting our community. So, I mean, when we talk about its failing intersection, it's a failing intersection in Oregon City to which we have no jurisdiction over.
Failed, let's just.
I tell you what, if failure is a one point oh, that thing is probably ninety-nine point something.
It's a fail, it's a failed intersection.
And quite honestly, whatever agreement we enter into with these other jurisdictions, there ought to be some notification requirement.
The UGMA does have a notification requirement. It's just conveniently got. I'm not even going to give them the benefit of the doubt. It was completely an oversight. This, we do not need two-acre hobby farms at the edge of our urban growth boundary. Is, I I would be curious to know whether this is is farmland and this person has just been sitting on it thinking he was going to get a, you know, a windfall. Um, I I just, it's, to me, it just goes against everything that I have worked for over the years in terms of planning. It's 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 completely wrong. It should not have been allowed. And for us to not receive notice, again, when I made that statement, when Jenna was here about everything flowing downhill to us, this is another one of those cases where we're going to end up having to deal with the negative impacts to the rest of our community because of an oversight by the county. And I'm just, I'm very disappointed. But I will say this, that, uh, we talked about updating the UGMA about twenty-five years ago and it just never came up on the planning department's work task because it just kept getting put back and put back. It's so out of date. So, UGMA stands for Urban Growth Management Agreement that we have with Clackamas County. So.
But if if part of that agreement is a required notification and that wasn't done, that's, the process was.
It's required by goal fourteen, if nothing else.
Then the process was deficient in itself.
It's the communication that we don't get. So let's have a motion on this because I'm pretty sure it's going to be unanimous.
Now move to approve, uh, our participation as an amicus in DLCD versus Clackamas County.
Second.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Marl?
Aye.
Mayor McGriff?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Any other business, Mr. Conkle?
Nope, not tonight.
Any other business? We are heading for a world's record. I have no communications as well. Okay, we adjourned.
Wait, wait, wait.
Exact question.
Reports from, oh, too late, you missed it. Oh, I guess.
Do you want me to reopen the meeting?
I do have one quick thing that I.
Okay. I'm reopening the meeting.
You can't, you have to have a quorum to do that.
Let's give Commissioner Mitchell courtesy.
Okay.
Mr. Reed, don't go too far. Your name's going to come up here in a second.
Uh, we shut down the Zoom.
Kendall, we reopened the meeting.
Oh, he shut off the broadcast, so get me a second.
Tell him to turn it back on.
David, for the next meeting.
Too bad. We can't turn it back on.
Uh, just give us a minute.
Give us a minute.
We'll see.
Are you sure? It says we're still on the air. Okay. You're back on. We got it back on.
And you?
Yes, I said we're back in.
Okay. Um, real quickly, um, as you all know, there's been some discussion about the capability or capacity of the John Storm Dock and could it handle larger tourism craft than we thought? And the engineering report indicates that it could. It's a cert, it's a report done by a certified engineer with the stamp and the whole nine yards.
Who is?
I don't have the name right in front of me.
Okay, I asked and we were not given that information.
We just recently got it.
Yeah. Um.
Thank you.
So that was kind of a prerequisite to then talking to Marine Board about what really was the agreement
Right.
when that dock was built. And, um.
Question real quick. So these people are asking these questions about stuff that's that's really our jurisdiction?
Which people are asking?
I don't know. You're whoever did the report. I mean, that that, to me, that is a responsibility of our city to be asking these questions with the Marine Board because that's who the contract is with.
And that's what I'm asking is, is can this, asking this commission to authorize Mr. Reed to begin a discussion with the Marine Board about what needs, what can be done now that we know that physically the dock can handle two ninety-foot vessels in low water conditions, which is May to October, which is when tourism boats would be there. So we are asking for our staff to now work with the Marine Board since we know that there's not a physical limitation on the dock.
With all your respect, I have no reason to disbelieve you. I want to see the report before I would like to make a motion.
And you will.
I I don't want to, I don't want to say I'm going to recommend as a group that we're doing something when I haven't seen it. So if we can get that by the time we have, before our next meeting, I'm happy to entertain, we should entertain a motion to discuss it, but I I'm not comfortable seeing something sight unseen.
Well, um, I I understand.
Yeah, thank you. So that's, that's my only concern.
Okay, I understand, but they're, but they're really two separate discussions. All the report has done is allow us to now discuss that there's, there was no reason to talk to, they're two separate issues. There was no reason to talk to the Marine Board if the dock couldn't physically handle it.
Right.
But the 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 report itself doesn't impact the discussion that we're going to have with the Marine Board. The discussion with the Marine Board is about the agreement on how that was financed when it was built.
And we, and I believe Kendall already did a bunch of that research early on and told us what we know today. And maybe we need to revisit it.
Yeah.
And I believe that's what we're asking and and commissioners.
Put it on next, next time's agenda. We're meeting again in two weeks.
Well, as as my fellow commissioner said, there's two components to this and there's always been two components to it. One was the physical structural ability of the dock to handle vessels that exceeded the original agreement. That has now been verified by a licensed professional engineer who has signed it and and we will provide that. The second part of the discussion is reviewing the agreement, knowing now that there's no limitation to increasing the size of the vessel. Hopefully, those on our staff who are used to dealing with fellow bureaucracies can give us a means to navigate a change in that agreement and hopefully a change that does not require a financial contribution. We validated the fact that the dock can handle these vessels of larger size. That's the beginning of the conversation. Had that not occurred, there would be no conversation. And now we should probably provide that report for everyone's viewing and we just got it. We're not withholding it. Because we required the signature and a sign off by a licensed professional engineer. That gives, that opens the door for the subsequent discussion of, knowing this, second part of discussion is what will it take to amend that agreement to allow us to proceed with something that is incredible value? And I want, I got to give this group credit. They took on a project and did it by the numbers. They they overcame the first hurdle and now we're asking our city staff to continue the conversation with the Marine Board. Does that make sense to everybody? And that's where we're at.
Okay, well, let's get it, let's get it on the top of the pops.
Well, why do we need to put it on a second meeting? We've, we've.
I didn't say second. I said put it on the next agenda.
Why don't we do it? Can we give direction to staff to proceed at this point? After they, we furnish that document or what, is there a certain sequence that has to happen? Does it need to go on another agenda?
Up to the commission. Uh, this wasn't publicized. We haven't seen the report.
You're about to.
But if you're, if you, if the majority of the commission want to direct me to go start negotiating for increasing the commercial license space on John Storm Dock, you can do that.
I think we need to have it on a public meeting.
We're in a public meeting right now.
We don't have the documentation. We need to give people notice. They're interested in this and this, let's just do it. By the book, by the book. Let's just do what we normally do when we want to have discussion about something. We let the people know. If they don't show up, that's, that's, we've given people the opportunity to come and talk about it.
I just see that as a hindrance to a process that can gain a couple of weeks' advantage and maybe give us something with a report back that says, here is how the state Marine Board was receptive or not receptive. Here's the avenue you can pursue. And so if 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 staff is looking for direction, I I would make, I would be the first to propose that we give staff the direction to begin the conversation to gather that information, knowing that we have overcome the physical constraints that were un- undefined previously. And we probably need to furnish to Mr., to Kendall, the specifics because it's a specific period of time, specific flow rates in a river and specific vessel sizes. We're not asking to do it all year long. So whatever my fellow commissioners want to do, but I'm in favor of moving forward because it's going to be a long conversation with a lot of back and forth, as you already know.
Was that a motion?
Sure, that was a motion to proceed with, to to initiate the conversation based on the information that we will provide immediately.
Second.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Marl?
Aye.
And Mayor McGriff?
I'm going to abstain because I think it needs to be on the next city commission agenda.
Motion passes.
So we are now adjourned.